Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda for August 8, 2024.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We have a purchase order and Tracy's in the back to answer any questions about anything. No? Good with purchase order? No internal budget revisions. We have a change in status. Higher recommendation received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for William Newcombe as a part-time firefighter with an hour Higher recommendation received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for William Newcombe as a part-time firefighter with an hourly rate of $21. That's effective August the 8th, 2024. Change in status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Stephen Thomas. He is going from a Deputy Court Marshal I to Deputy Court Marshal II. His salary will go from $39,017 to $40,006.78. That's effective August the 1st. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff, Rob Blair, for Aaron Price. He is receiving an increase due to years of service. His salary will go from $65,756 to $69,043. And that's effective August the 16th. We have a letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Department for Lori Cackley, and that's effective August the 1st, 2024. Letter of resignation received from the Tax Office for Laura Higgins. That's effective to August the 2nd, 2024. And a letter of resignation received from the County Clerk's Office for Franklin Carbaugh, and that is effective September the 15th, 2024. And we would like to remove Calvin Blythe from the payroll effective August the 5th, 2024. Uh, let's see. I have the approval of the minutes. Everybody was present, so we can leave them in. And we have a canceled check request from the Clerk's Office. All right. Anything else for the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Correction of assessment logs. Mr. Hess, good to see you this morning. You have six of them, right?
Good morning.
To begin with.
I do. Taxpayer error. I do have six, and they all were for, they didn't mark them off. They just reported them. They didn't mark the vehicles off when they added other ones, so. I had to put them in as taxpayer error. Six of them, but a total of $1,515.54.
Okay. Can I have a motion, um, for the six personal tax exonerations for office error?
So moved.
That's taxpayer error.
Taxpayer error. I'm sorry. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion denied. Uh, 24 personal property tax exonerations for office error.
We do. Office error. We had 24 of them for the reasons that are listed there. Uh, if you total all of them up, they come to $5,718.77.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the 24 person, or yeah, personal property tax exonerations for office error?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And then we have seven real estate tax exonerations for office error.
We do. We have seven of those. Most of them were for wrong tax class, but all those seven totaled up to $3,452.75.
And I have a motion for the seven real estate tax exonerations due to office error.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have one apportionment of taxes due, uh, per final divorce decree.
Yeah, we, uh, for Christopher and Laura Stager, they want to get the bills split so they could each pay their own, uh, for their own automobile. We had two vehicles, total assessed value of $32,514, and we split the bill up. Uh, Christopher got $15,735 worth of assessment, and Laura got $16,779. So we just need your approval so we can get them each their single bills.
All righty. Do I have a motion to approve the apportionment of taxes per final divorce?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, like, sign opposed, motion carries. And two applications for consolidation of property.
Yeah, for, uh, say two or one?
Uh, oh, okay. Might be one. Oh, that's the number two as in the order. Sorry.
There's two copies, original and a, and a copy. For Daniel Funk, he had, yeah, they had three, uh, three parcels. He wanted to consolidate them to get one tax bill. They were all, uh, in the Hedgesville District, map three, parcel 18, 18-1, and 18-2. So we put them together so you could get one tax bill, so I need your approval on that.
Have a motion to approve the, uh, application for consolidation.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. All righty. Thank you, Larry. Uh, we're up to board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd.
I had another week of nothing.
Another week of nothing. Very good. Mr. Catlett?
Um, Tuesday, we had a sewer board meeting, and, um, several of their projects have been completed, and the main one that, uh, the biggie is the one back at Dewitt's Resort, the new, uh, new plant there, and it's moving along ahead of schedule at this point. So they're very pleased with that. Um, I'm sure the weather the next couple of days will slow down a bit, but, uh, but it's been a pretty dry summer, so it hasn't affected their, uh, their, uh, construction, uh, process at all. On the stormwater side, um, as I last reported, they extended the, um, the, uh, public comment period, uh, 30 more days for the new MS4 statewide general permit. And they have now gotten some comments from the EPA, so that is all under review, and, um, there'll be more to come later as to how all this is going to shake out, but, uh, it, it's getting quite interesting, to say the least, at this point. So, um, uh, last night, uh, with my fellow Commissioner Jim Whitaker, we were down at the youth fair and enjoyed a wonderful evening. The weather was decked home perfect. Cloudy and cool with a nice breeze and a nice crowd, and, um, got to talk to quite a few people, and it was a wonderful evening, and I commend the, uh, youth fair on the job that they do to present this, uh, program to the community each year. It's a wonderful thing. The last thing I wanted to mention, I had mentioned, uh, last week, I guess it was, that, uh, maybe the week before, I can't remember, but that the senior center does not have an AED on site, and I had a meeting earlier last week with Chad and Brian Costello and Deputy Chief Barry, and, and the Amless Authority is going to purchase and pay for a AED for the senior center and take it over and, uh, get a cabinet for it and mount it where they need it and, and teach them how to properly utilize the thing. So, uh, that's a great thing, and, uh, also, uh, Chad's going to, uh, look into, uh, with, with their cooperation, all of our county facilities and come back with some recommendations, maybe if we need others in other places of buildings that we, uh, we take care of, so. I think that's a very positive thing, and I'd always rather need it and not have it.
Uh, absolutely. That's my take as well, so.
Or not have it and not need it. Sorry about that.
I knew what you meant.
I spent too long at the fair last night. Sorry.
Rather than that. That's all that I had to report.
Wow. Goodness gracious. All right. Eddie, anything?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, actually, Lee and I spent Monday evening together at the fair, and I'd just like to congratulate all the participants and their families for, uh, and, and the Youth for, Youth Fair Board on, uh, really a great venue and, uh, a lot of tradition there. I had a construction meeting yesterday. The Dunn Building, if you haven't noticed, is wrapping up and, uh, waiting on a few inspections. They're doing, finishing up, uh, the old assessors', uh, area right now. It's very, very nice. They're currently working in the old Amless Authority. It's where the building inspection, uh, department will go. So it's, it's kind of tore up right now, but they're getting there. Um, day report. They're still finishing drywall, still pulling some wires here and there, uh, but that building is coming on very nicely. Um, they'll be firing up the HVAC, uh, this week coming, so that will be a big deal. That was one of the things that we were really concerned about, uh, going into this. And, uh, I just, I want to mention that, um, it, because it's important, not, not that it took the time, but because it's important. Um, the Bethany House is in, um, a situation where they've, they've lost some grant funding from the state, and it's critical to their operation. Uh, they currently house 16 women and their children, and they are, they are could possibly close because of this lack of funding. So I've been working the, the phones along with the city, Martinsburg, Andy Blake brought it to my attention Monday night, uh, so I've reached out to a couple senators and delegates to try and put some pressure on DHS, you know, since they've been broken off. Uh, their, those grants are now looked at by the, uh, Homeless Coalition, and, uh, they, they received this grant for 38 years, and to all of a sudden, uh, remove that money out of their budget is, is critical to them. And, uh, if anybody has any influence with them.
What kind of money are we talking about?
Uh, $209,000. So it's, it's really important to them that, that this money be restored. Um, I, I can't imagine those women being put in that position where they're put out on the street. They've already had difficulties, so, and the children, so. That's, that is important, and, uh, I, I hope that our, our phone calls and stuff will be able to influence folks to reconsider their decision there.
It's helped a lot of people in this community, and I was involved several years ago with getting a person placed there at a time when they needed it, and I couldn't speak more highly of the place and what they did for this particular person. I ousted her till she could get back on her feet. I hope it gets worked out for sure.
That's it.
Okay. Again, with Commissioner Catlett last night down at the fairgrounds and all that wonderful fair food that was available to everybody, um, had a, um, uh, had a great time. Sherry and I went down and.
The sheriff, he got dunked. He dropped in that dunk tank 100 times in his hour. He was on the chairs.
Yeah.
If they didn't hit it with the ball, they'd go up and use their hand and push him in. He was getting abused.
I, I can remember the last time I was in one was up at Taylor's up at Inwood when he had that little fair going on up there. After hitting that water about two dozen times and everybody pushing the button, I could barely walk for two days. And I know what would happen if I got, I'd be more than happy to get in it, but I think I would probably have to have a tow truck to get me out of it, so. I, uh, I'll just give a donation for the, for the calls. But, um, anyway, I did have a, um, a planning commission meeting on Monday night, and it was very well attended. We had one, two, three, seven, eight, uh, eight public hearings. Uh, the one with a little bit of contention was the Little Georgetown Estates, and it was a request for a waiver to, um, beat off a lot that needs to be, um, recorded for their stormwater management. If this isn't done, the, um, there's a chance that that lot could be sold off and used, you know, other things, for other things than a stormwater management, and that's. So we had the engineers checking into it and, and trying to understand why they're still having some issues down there, and we were talking just a little bit this morning about it. Uh, it's, it's the types of soil that, uh, that are in that area that's creating some issues with the water, and it's drainage area. It's, it lays pretty flat, and it's hard to get water to move when it lays in a, in a flat position. However, Doug says it was about three foot of fall and about 1,500 feet, and that is not much. So that was one of them, and then the, um, uh, going on through, there was preliminary plan approvals, um, for, uh, the BFS. It's Warm Springs. Um, that's going out there, I think on the corner of Warm Springs and, um, Edwin Miller, is that where the Exxon is now?
No.
No, all where, all where it was.
Where the Horner farm was.
Farm was. Okay, that's right. Uh, and then they had preliminary final plates, and, and the meeting was over. It was, uh, it was, it was a good meeting. Like I said, the, the citizens that come in are very concerned, um, as, as they should be, uh, when something doesn't seem right. We, we try to do the best that we can to correct the issues, and, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to make a decision when the right one's always not mostly the popular one, so. And that's all I have.
Back to the dunk tank, I noticed that the audience there, the Chief Eric Burnett was enjoying it more than anyone there, so.
Yeah.
In fact, he was on the, uh, the PA thing, blasted, begging people to come and, um, and dunk the sheriff, so I'm sure they raised a lot of money.
I participated.
I gave $5 to a kid to go throw, so.
Yeah, I did the same thing, 'cause I knew I couldn't hit that target, so I gave it to the, gave it to the youngster.
Burnett's working midnight's next month.
Foot patrol.
For sure. He should be.
He'll be here in a little bit. We'll have to ask.
Yeah, we'll ask him and see how it goes. Maybe we need to set up a dunk tank outside.
He didn't take, he didn't take a turn either, you know.
Yeah, he did.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he got in there.
I missed that, dude.
Yeah, you did. It was towards the end of the, uh, the event.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I, I paid for a couple other kids to go up there and dunk him a few times.
Well, I missed that.
Uh, but anything, uh, anything else on board meeting reports? No new vacant, or, uh, nothing to appoint for vacancies? And we have, uh, an interview with the fiduciary commissioner, Mr. Bush.
Looks like Will Lawrence.
Yeah, it does.
I, I was just going to set kind of the, the stage of what fiduciary commissioners do, and of course, uh, ask Mr. Bush to come up here and answer any questions. So, uh, as you know, this commission often hears estate cases where interested parties are in conflict. A beneficiary is unhappy with an executor. An executor is unhappy with a creditor. In some cases where the facts are, uh, require more than a simple examination, either this commission or my office as your agent will assign a fiduciary commissioner to hear and gather more deliberate evidence from the interested parties via formal discovery. The fiduciary commissioner will then take that evidence, apply the law, and issue this body a finding which recommends, uh, an appro, uh, the appropriate action for the case at issue. The legislature permits, uh, this county have four fiduciary commissioners, and we had one, Mr. David DiGiarnette, resign from his duties early in 2023. Thus, my office has been tasked with replacing Mr. DiGiarnette's services. Mr. Bush's credentials are attached to your read ahead, and it is my belief that he would serve this body and this county extremely well as our newest fiduciary commissioner. I now invite Mr. Bush to come up and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, sir. How were you this morning?
Morning, Commissioner. Doing well, thank you.
This is one of my fellow planning commission members as well, and he wants to come in and perform other duties as a, as a, as a citizen of this county. I greatly appreciate.
Other duties as assigned. Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's what it is, and, and thank you for coming in.
You're most welcome, and I would be remiss if I, uh, didn't mention that Jerrit Town Presbyterian Church has two representatives this morning, so that's got to be a record of some sort.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, usually we just ask him a few questions. If you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, that, first off, and, and then, uh, we'll start with HD. If he has any questions for you, we'll move on from there.
Sure. Uh, Commissioner, good morning. My name is Mike Bush. Uh, I'm a local, uh, attorney, focusing my practice on estate and trust work and business transactional work. Uh, you know, the, the law is becoming highly specialized, but, um, where I would want to focus, am focusing my practice is on the, the core services that are really critical to a well-functioning local community. Uh, and estate administration is one of those functions which, uh, is tasked with overseeing the efficient, orderly transition of, uh, property and estates. And so I, I believe it's critically important work so that property records are maintained, so that financial affairs are maintained, and the efficient administration of those estates is important for, uh, the loved ones involved. So, uh, I take a holistic approach to the estate work and with the intent of resolving the estates and seeking the final closure to the extent that's possible.
HD?
Okay, well, seeing how I don't know much about this commission, I'll ask you, because I'm sure you do, you're applying for this commission. What exactly do you guys do?
So matters would be assigned to a commissioner as needed. So Mr. Lawrence's office is tasked with overseeing the efficient administration of estates, and to the extent there's controversy that arises, a specific commissioner is appointed in each one of those, uh, or can be appointed in, uh, each specific case. So it's a matter by, by matter, um, appointment.
So if there's major issues with a certain.
That's right.
Case, it comes to you and you help resolve it.
That's exactly right.
Makes sense. Anything else? Mr. Catlett?
I, I don't have any questions for you. I, I trust the judgment of, um, of our, uh, wonderful employee here. And if he recommends you, uh, I, uh, I support that totally, and we just want to say that we appreciate the fact that serving on the planning commission now, willing to do this, is a huge help to our community, and we just can't thank you enough for your interest. And we just can't thank you enough for your interest to do this, and we appreciate it greatly.
Honored to be involved. Thank you.
Eddie?
Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
How you doing? You know, obviously you've, you've got a, a background already. When you were with Bowls and Rice and estate planning and little estate business transaction. I've served with you previously on the planning commission, and I've found that you've always been informed. You've been very methodical and you've been very fair. And I would certainly think there would be no different when a case is assigned to you that you would use that same judgment and fairness and the law to apply to help settle these estates. So I think that you have a high level of integrity, and I appreciate you applying for this position.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Mike, I don't have any questions. I guess that, other than the statement I usually make, that anybody that's willing to give back to their community is, is a great thing.
I agree.
So I appreciate your, you wanting to take on this extra responsibility in your, in your daily life. And, and I know you'll do it without prejudice, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
That's about it. Do we go ahead and appoint or do we, can I get a motion to appoint Mike to the fiduciary commission? So move. Motion second. In a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Mike, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Okay. Well, we're just a little bit ahead of time, but we have Chief Burnett in here to bid recommendation for medical equipment or RFP. Come on up, chief.
I noticed the sheriff's walking, walking a little slower today.
I hear a squishing in the shoes.
Yeah.
Sheriff, the commission, I've, I've talked to them, they're willing to go ahead and bless all the overtime necessary for the new midnight shift that he's gonna be working.
I'd be happy to do that. Okay, I'm gonna be really, really brief to save you all some time. One of the items on the agenda was to take our old handguns and put them into.
Do the LEDs in order, their read heads in order. Or no, use the RFP for the medical.
Let's go with the trauma kits. Again, these will not cost the county any money at all. This was part of the Stop Violence Program grant, and there's some extra money left over. We sent out some bids for some trauma kits. We got back five bids. One of them did not have the full kits. Eighty trauma kits at twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents from Atlantic Tactical, and that's who we want to go with.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the recommendation from, for the chief for the medical equipment kits? So move. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Two of them. I'll get a second, right? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. And request for additional deputy position, deputy sheriff position. Is that right? We on to that one?
I'll let the sheriff talk on that one.
I'll be more brief than the chief was. I think you all provided with a memo on this matter. She hopefully understands where we're at here. But basically on January first, twenty twenty-five, our office is going to be required to supply an additional court security deputy to the, to the new circuit court judge that will be added here in Berkeley County, obviously due to the growth of this area. So every area government's obviously growing. And this is an unfunded mandate by the state that we provide this service. And I'm just requesting that that additional position be added, that we can get a jumpstart on this. Just to let you know, last Saturday, we tested, I believe nine individuals ended up taking the written test. And we have six vacancies we're looking to, to fill right now. We feel very confident with the, the pool that we had, that four of them are already certified, which is awesome. They can, they can get on the red quicker that way. And they all seem to have some good qualifications. So we're hopeful that we'll get those six positions filled. But we would like this additional position to, to, to help us in this area with the court security. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
We just love these unfunded mandates. They're pretty good and worth it.
Yes, sir. Right.
It just seems like, you know, with our staffing, we kind of, you know, inch by inch, we, we're trying to move forward. And then we end up losing a road deputy or wherever you may have this deputy position to the courts. And, you know, we do want our, our system, our court system to be safe. There's no question or doubt about that. But it hurts us on the back, on the back end.
Yes.
And I, I think that Mr. Wine has already spoke previously to the sheriff about this position.
And I would offer, Mr. Vice President, if the commission sees fit, that you allow them and give them, will be number sixty-eight. Funny, we've been, they've been to sixty-eight, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, they're going back to sixty-eight. They've already advertised during their process. I would offer that you, you, if you so choose, you fund it immediately, put it in his budget so they can begin the conditioning, get ready. So go live January one, and there's no delay, either at the road level and particularly at the judge level. Alrighty. So that leads us to a motion.
I would make that motion to create this new position immediately.
Or recreate.
Or recreate.
Sixty-one uniformed officer.
Or sixty-eight uniformed.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sheriff, one other thing. I, I know that there's, you have a desire to increase your staff with the task force.
Yes, sir.
I think is what I understood.
Yes, sir. Very much so.
You know, we're certainly not prepared to do that today. But we, we are prepared to plant that seed and start working towards being able to get that person that you desire on that task force. That's one of the worlds you came from previously, and I know you're committed to it. I, I don't know where the other agencies are on their manpower levels. But as in most other things, we lead the way in, in most things, so.
Yes, want to keep it that way, too.
Yeah. So, so we take that in consideration, and we will plant that seed and try to find those dollars to.
It's very, very much appreciated because as I've said before, I don't think the citizens understand how important that task force is in this area. You've seen some of the press releases we put out recently, working with them on these roundups and stuff. So, so I very much appreciate you bring that up, and we'll look forward to discussing that further.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for all your guys and everybody that was down there last night to help raise, help raise the funds.
How much did you raise last night? Now, was that just, was that the whole evening or just for the sheriff?
Just for us.
It was until we got rained out, so that wasn't too bad.
Rained out, well, you're already wet.
When's the commission night?
We just discussed that before you got in here.
I'm, I'm still volunteered to be first.
We plead that we're too old to participate.
Appreciate your donation.
Yes, indeed. I told him I, I'll make another donation because I guarantee you, I would not be able to climb up and down off of that bench as many times as you all did. Yeah, so, thank you all. Next, declaration of surplus property.
Yes, sir. Part of the new gun purchase, we were gonna take our old weapons and turn them into surplus. And there's a list on page, on page two of all of our current weapons that we want to go into the, into surplus so that these can be credited towards our purchase of our new weapons.
Okay. A bunch of them.
They'll be up for sale.
Alrighty. Do we have a motion to, for the declaration of surplus of property as presented in the read ahead?
Mr. Wine, you good?
When, when you, when he, he says up for sale, he doesn't mean, we're not auctioning them. These go into the.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
They're gonna be for sale for deputies.
Correct.
They're gonna go ahead and pay for them.
Yes, yes. What happens in these instances, the, the seller buys them, the licensed firearms dealer buys them from you, the county commission. And then they in turn offer them for sale back to the officer that carries.
Back to the deputies, right. We're not in the gun selling business.
No, I didn't think that. I knew what he meant, but thank you for the clarification. I guess we've done this a couple of times. So can I get a motion for the declaration of surplus?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. There we are. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Nope. Thank you, guys. Wasn't me. And we're a little bit ahead of time again, and we're gonna have a proclamation of Epic United Soccer Team recognition. I've got a proclamation. Would you all like me to read it? It's coming forth.
Are they all here since we're here? We might, you know, do each other.
Is everybody here? That was gonna be here. Do we have anybody else?
Somebody out.
We're good.
I like that, she must be a team captain. We have a proclamation, Epic O-six United wins National President's Cup nineteen U Championship. Whereas the Epic O-six United achieved their fairy tale ending in Wichita, Kansas, by winning the National President's Cup nineteen U Championship. And whereas Coach Jeff Murray stated that they knew this group of girls had something special and that they knew that they were going to do something special. To be able to end it as a team with a national championship was beyond expectations for them. And whereas, coming into national tournament with only a thirteen-person roster, they faced multiple teams with up to eighteen players. And with that, and with a prestigious tournament to only have two substitute players. And whereas, the championship was won in the middle of the December, in the middle of December, outside in thirty-degree weather. These guys kept participating, which is what made this group so special. And whereas, Eastern Panhandle-based soccer team delivered an unforgettable performance and secured their legacy as the first team from West Virginia to ever earn the national championship. Now therefore be it resolved, the Berkeley County Commission congratulates Epic O-six on their win in making West Virginia soccer history, adopted this eighth day of August, twenty twenty-four. And with that, we've got a bunch of certificates up here.
Could I read them out?
Yes, indeed.
Tell you what some things.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, sure.
The first thing I want to say is, I'm Commissioner Steve Catlin, and I went to Hedgesville High School. And I, my son went to Hedgesville High School with, twenty-five years ago. He, my son and some of his teammates and kids from Martinsburg High School, we had Todd Mosby from Mussumon High School. And I created a traveling basketball team, and we won the state championship at West Virginia like you did. So we end up in Florida for the Eastern Regionals in Florida. And we got kicked pretty good. We did all right, but we didn't advance any further. And obviously, the further you go, the more difficult it gets and the competition gets greater. So I don't know if a team from this area that, you know, we've had a lot of state champions. Mussumon volleyball, Martinsburg football, Hedgesville's won two basketball, Martinsburg's won three. But to win a national championship, I, I don't know that it's ever happened in this community, in this, in this Eastern Panhandle. And that's, that's an amazing feat that you did. And I understand that the, the regional that you played in was held here in West Virginia down in Charleston. I assume is that Shawnee Park where that development is. So it, it was a great accomplishment to win a national championship, it's amazing. I, I think the only thing that could compare to that in our county's history was Vicki Bullitt winning a gold medal years ago on the United States Women's Basketball Team. And that was pretty special. And so for you to do this is just unbelievable. And I, I'm gonna read out the names if you'd come forward, and then I'm gonna say a little bit about some of the girls.
We're gonna go, usually go down front.
Yeah. And then. Yeah, have them come forward.
Have them come forward when you read them.
Pass them out, and I'll sit here and read off the.
Come on down.
Come forward. First of all, head coach Eric, is it canonical that I pronounce that right? Would you come forward, Eric? Great job, and I'm sure you're proud of these girls, to say the least. Did you have either your assistants here today?
Unfortunately, they weren't able to assist me.
Okay. Jim Whittaker, tell me which one you, you're gonna go next, and then I'll.
Well, I've got all the, the assistants, or the coaches are in the last ones. We're gonna go first one is Madeline Adams.
Okay, let me say this about Madeline. She will be playing at Washington High School this fall and has committed to West Liberty. Is that correct? Is she here? Okay.
Molly Colbert?
Molly Colbert will be playing at Jefferson High School this fall and has committed to Frostburg University.
How about Chloe Demolin?
Demolin. We'll be, she will be playing this fall at Fairmont State.
Cameron Dillo.
Will be playing at Jefferson High School this fall and is uncommitted at this point.
Abigail Johnson.
She will be playing at Hedgesville High School, bless your heart, and is uncommitted at this point as well.
Peyton Miller.
And Peyton's gonna be playing at Hagerstown Community College this fall. Where'd you go to high school, Peyton?
I went to the.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Congratulations.
Jaden Murray.
Will be playing at Susquehanna University this fall. And where did you play high school? Ready also, okay.
Sarah Raider.
Who was that?
Sarah Raider.
Sounds about right. Mansfield University, is that correct, Sarah?
Yes.
And where did you play your high school?
Spring Mills.
Spring Mills High School, okay. The new high school in the county. I got a little story about Molly Reebuck, and I've never met you, Molly, but Molly. Molly, you went to Berkeley Springs High School, correct? No, you went to Gretti.
I went to Gretti.
That's right. And she's going to Frostburg State this year. Let me tell you something about Molly Reebuck. Her grandfather is a lifelong friend of mine, Steve French. And if you don't know Steve French, first of all, you lost your great-grandmother recently. And I missed her service because I was away. But she was a wonderful lady, great, great lady. Your grandfather, Steve, and I go way back. We went to school together from elementary school all the way to high school. He taught history at South Middle School until he retired in, in Berkeley County for many years. And he knows more about the Civil War stuff than Kevin Walker does, okay? He is a, he's written four books that I have that he, over the Civil War. But he's an awesome guy. He, he is so proud of you. Well, and I understand that when y'all were with us all, that even Kansas University was talking to you about a potential scholarship there. But it would have been, I spent three summers at Kansas University in basketball camp when I was in high school. Lawrence, Kansas is a great place, but Frostburg State's a great place, too. Okay. I'm sorry, but I, I just gotta share, share this.
Gabrielle is.
I didn't embarrass you, did I?
Be good at putting people on the spot, and I think you get pretty good at that.
Will be playing this fall at Jefferson High School and has committed to Millersville. Congratulations.
Erica Schnabel's not able to be here.
She'll be playing at Washington High School this fall and is uncommitted.
Audrey Slokan's not here.
She'll be playing at Shippensburg University this fall.
Alexandria, a week.
All right, Alexandria, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. I've never met you either, but will be playing at Martinsburg High this fall and is uncommitted. Her grandfather grew up in the town of Hedgesville, up on Cannon Hill, at the top of the hill. He was one of thirteen children or twelve, thirteen children. His name was Jimmy Donaldson. Jimmy Donaldson is a legend in Hedgesville, your grandfather, okay? I want you to know that. And my sister is married to his brother, okay? So, and I went to school with the Donaldsons my whole life and grew up in the town of Hedgesville. And Jimmy Donaldson is, is a legend in Hedgesville. And you tell him that Steve Catlin said that, would you? But congratulations, so.
Callan Yates is unable to be here.
And she'll be playing this fall at Minnesota Crookston.
Head coach.
Wow.
Have Jeff Murray, assistant coach. Is Jeff here? Okay. We got, we got one more, Steve. Molly Colbert just came in, but come on up.
Molly will be playing at Jefferson High School this fall and has committed also to Frostburg University.
Okay, and Rachel Ransom's not here, assistant coach? Did we have? And Rachel Ransom's not here, assistant coach.
Well, you, and we're going to let you speak down there, but you know the team. Go ahead.
All right. I just wanted to take this opportunity. This is the best collective group of players and soccer team since 1772 in our area. It's an amazing accomplishment. They're all at the level which they could have gone to any organization down in the big cities and played, and they've made a choice to stay here. Because of that choice and struggles that they went through, they broke every mold that was in our area and every accomplishment that the clubs in our area had obtained had blown past us with the accomplishments. This one tournament is not really what the award should be for. They've put in eight years for this county and for our area to even get the opportunity to play in a tournament. I was hoping to come in today just to share with you and the council that maybe there's a possibility we could write a rule that after they go away to college and experience that they are forced to come back to our area. Because they are such amazing human beings through the process of sport that we could use here, them here building a better.
I'm going to make that a motion.
The only other thing that I, I would like to say is, unfortunately, we, we had limited resources available to us in this area, and the last year or two, we actually found ourselves having to train either outside of county or outside of state. And I'm hopeful that in my next 25 years of coaching for players of West Virginia, that maybe we, if the opportunity comes for resources in our area, that we jump on it. Because it's not the extra fields and the goals or the baskets that we create, it's people like this. And so that's what I, my hope is, is that we can continue to push and have amazing, amazing human beings processes. Thank you for recognizing them and bringing them in. They were an absolute bring to coach and to be a part of, and, but again, if I can.
Can I say something else? I know I got a lot to say. And I started as a parks and rec director here in Berkeley County in 1976. 1977, we started the first ever, because you know, when your granddads were in high schools, I was in high school, there was no high school soccer, okay? It was a foreign sport. Everybody in the world played except America. And you know, you could see it coming, you could see it coming. So we started the soccer program in 77. We had two teams at first. Then it went to 910 teams the second year. And then it went to 20 teams the third year. So, and of course, the rest is history because we've got a beautiful Dupont Soccer Complex that was built, soccer, and all the travel teams would do epic. And there's thousands of kids, you know, in this vast state area playing soccer every year. And we're starting to catch up with the rest of the world. I don't know if we're going to win the World Cup in my lifetime, but I'm sure in your lifetime. Well, saying that, the girls have, so, but not the guys. So hopefully the guys will catch up. And, but it's an unbelievable accomplishment. Congratulations to you so much.
Coach, it sounds like you guys are very lucky, excuse me, to have somebody like him that already knows the sport, but continues to lift you up. But that's what's important today, is, and everybody needs a little bit of a nudge to get you up and get you going, get your head up, make you proud of what you're doing, and be successful. And I'm going to, I have, I have that much of a soccer experience, right? I remember it was like the third grade, maybe, in grade school, of like 100 years ago. They said, okay, y'all, we're going to play soccer today. Well, that lasted for about 15 minutes. We ended up in a fight. We got, everybody's kicking the shins, and we end up in a fight, and we never played soccer again. And I've watched it, I've got, I've got relatives that have played and done very well. I don't understand one thing about it. All I can remember back is the fight that we got in, in grade school, on the playground because we were kicking one another in the shin. I'm glad there's somebody to teach you.
I got, you know, long as that story might have my grandson plays, but soccer, we soccer. And you can see the parents on the sidelines, they are in there.
Say the least.
Might be the youngest up here, but thank you, Steve, for getting the program started. I played 12 seasons, started in 81.
We're going to take a break and get some pictures, and then we've already broadcasted everything here, so. So Penny, would you take us into a break?
Okay, we're back in session and next on the agenda is Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, Bid Recommendations LED Message Board.
Can you say the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have to adopt the proclamation that we did for the Epic Soccer Team. So can I have a motion to adopt the proclamation for Epic 06 United?
I would love to make that motion.
I have a motion, I mean, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries, thank you. Okay, Chad, you're up.
Thank you. So the purchase recommendation before you today is a result of an HSGP Zero Match Grant that was applied for, oh my, probably eighteen months ago, some funds were held up at the federal level and were released. It went out to bid, we received two bids back. The All Traffic Solutions came in at the lowest and most qualified bid. It does line up for the county very well because it's the exact same signboard that the Sheriff's Department uses minus the radar detection, so the same trailer setup, the same hitch, all those things. Randy, the grant was for $40,000. Randy is recommending after review, a purchase of two signs at a cost of $18,207.65 per sign, which will also give five years of unlimited access for, I'm not sure if it's, I believe it's Wi-Fi, to be able to control the boards remotely. So the total of the purchase will be $36,415.30, and again, this is all on a Zero Match Federal Grant.
And these will be used by...
These are going to be used by emergency management.
Emergency management. Exclusively.
Exclusively, and they'll be available for all events held throughout the county. They'll be stored at emergency management in one of the garages there.
How many on one of them?
Two.
Alrighty. You've heard the bid recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation from Chad?
Go move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. And now we have a bid recommendation for generator light towers.
Yeah, so same setup eighteen months ago, HSGP grant was awarded $50,000 Zero Match Federal Grant, the money took a while to get released. This went out to bid, we did receive six bids back. Kelly Generator and Equipment came back as the lowest qualified bid. It comes into us at a cost of $23,015 each, so we are able to purchase two generator light towers underneath of this grant for a total of $46,030, and the recommendation is being made to award the purchase to Kelly Generator and Equipment.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation for the light tower, generator light towers. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Alrighty, and now we have a grant purchasing policy update.
We have identified a need to update our sole source purchasing policy due to some grant requirements at the federal level. We looked at this and found an opportunity to just update our sole source purchasing policy across the organization. We were able to define what sole source purchasing is, what it's to be used for, and when it is appropriate versus inappropriate for it to use. We've also went through and defined our debaired and suspended purchasers would be purchasers that are not qualified to be reimbursed by the county for purchases due to suspended workers' comp payments, something else, I believe.
It's suspended at the federal level.
Suspended at the federal level for non-payment workers' compensation insurance. Pretty simple and straightforward policy. There's some ideas out there, we've identified what sole source is and what sole source isn't. A purchase doesn't qualify for sole source because a commonly obtained gadget has a widget on it that you want over another one. There's been some conversations in the past that a feature of one thing is better than a feature of another thing, that doesn't qualify for sole source, but we do have things that do qualify for sole source, such as things with unique capabilities, anything that has compatibility issues with systems that we already have in place that would not work across other vendors, anything that holds a patent or a copyright, which means there's only one of them made. And you have continuation is another big one, something that we've been buying on a contract for a long time, that it just wouldn't make any sense for us to move off of another contract. Pretty standard sole source policy for your review and recommended for your approval.
To elaborate just a little bit, we already do the Western Workers' Conference, that's a state purchasing thing. This goes to another level at the federal level, similar to what you saw in the drone and how it was on, if you remember, it was on the quote-unquote "federal" blue list. They call it debarment and suspension certification for contracting purposes, not that we're involved in it, but if they're debaired or non-certified at the federal purchasing level, they're not, you can't use federal dollars to buy them. So this kind of gets us in line with federal level purchasing while they don't tell you what to do, but if you're using those grant monies, federal grant monies, you have to follow that policy, so that's it.
Okey-dokey. You've heard the recommendation and the sole source, seen it, the sole source policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Alrighty.
Chad, I'm sure that like Elizabeth will be very familiar with this policy as she moves forward with assisting with grants and stuff like that.
Most of the grant money that touches has federal ties to it, and there are a lot of things that are purchased with federal monies through Department of Justice for the Sheriff's Department and Emergency Management that this policy is going to tie to.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Can I get all those in favor? Say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Thank you, sir. I started reading something, lost my mind. Mr. Wine, State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund 001.
Yes, sir, so you've already taken care of the State Budget Revision Number One and dealt with your unencumbered fund balance. Here we are with all the revenue that had laid on Penny's desk, she's been, poor Penny, she's been collecting checks and holding it and filing it now for the whole month of July, and this is to straighten up and to deal with all of the ARPA transactions that happened for your building construction, that's the majority of this. $2,290,816 is the amount of revenue we need to realize, and I'm proposing that $73,703 be placed in Department 428, $24,754 in Department 443 State Grants, $88,259 into your contingency account, $16,956 in Account 700, which is the Sheriff's Law Enforcement, $10,389 into Account 717 Central Garage, $6,852 into Account 801 Mental Hygiene, $2,699, $2,699.3 into Account 988, which is other buildings, so again, $2,290,816.
Okay. You've heard the State Budget Revision Number Two, Fund 001, do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Now we're off onto a resolution.
Yes, sir, this, and you've done this multiple occasions, this is a resolution that allows you to reimburse yourself for expenses that may be incurred before your bond sale happens, so the Inwood Park, in your effort to sell those for construction of the park, if you have expenses, I believe it's... if you have expenses, I believe it's 90 days, I don't know what from the sale date, this resolution allows you to go back and recoup and reimburse yourself for those expenses prior to the bond sale. And again, you've done it with the DRC, you did it with the LEDs, I think you've done this practically every one of the bond sales you've had, so you have the opportunity to go back and recoup some of the money that you might spend before the closing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve or to adopt the resolution for stating a reasonable expenditure of the County Commission?
Go ahead, sir.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the end, almost, we have, we will be in executive session for economic development. Is there be any action taken? Okay, so we're going to go to items from the public. No items from the public, do I have a motion to go in executive session for economic development?
Go ahead.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We are in executive session.
All righty, we're back in session and there was no action to be taken in our executive session. Since Mr. Barnhart is not here, I'm looking for a motion to recess.
Well, sir, since I'm on the side of the room, I'll make a motion to recess.
Good move from the right-hand side of the room. Thank you. We are in recess.